Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Reno County Commission meeting for August 23rd. I'll call the meeting to order. This time, item two is a pledge of allegiance followed by a prayer by Pastor Charles Crumble of New Resurrection Baptist Church.
Most holy and gracious Father, Lord, it's once again we come before your presence, Lord, with a thankful heart. Lord, we just ask you to bless the men and women of this community, Lord, as we come together to be on one accord, making decisions to better our community. Lord, help us to acknowledge that your hand of counsel are sovereign over all things. Help us to trust in your divine plan and purpose, knowing that you have determined what already needs to be done. Grant us the wisdom and strength to align our will with your will and walk in obedience to your divine guidance. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Crumble. At this time, we have a couple items on welcome and announcements. First item is 3A, a proclamation for September is National Recovery Month. I'll ask Seth Dewey with the Health Department to present the proclamation.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Commission for letting me read this right now. Whereas the misuse of alcohol and illicit substances cost our country hundreds of billions of dollars every year, and we also see the devastating cost on quality of life and mortality that even rural America in Kansas is not immune to, and whereas the impacts stretch from families to the workforce, from schools to the medical community, and all feel the effects, and whereas recovery is a process of change through which people improve their health and wellness, build resilience, live self-directed lives, and strive to reach their full potential by better managing health, home, purpose, and community. Furthermore, the Reno Recovery Collaborative is one of the local resources for recovery and resilience-based services, and furthermore, that by building a durable network of community partners from the medical and behavioral health sector, substance use prevention and education, social services, law enforcement, persons with lived experience, and Oxford Houses, the Reno Recovery Collaborative partners are poised to offer and refer families the means to build resilience, offsetting the effects of ACEs and reducing the public cost of substance use disorder. And furthermore, as Reno County has been leading the charge in promoting a thriving recovery community by giving support and understanding, instilling in the hearts and minds of our children that there is hope, that all can live a happy and healthy life, and that recovery is possible.
Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Reno County, Kansas, that September 2023 shall be known as National Recovery Month. Thank you, Seth. This time, I might ask if the Commission has any comments in support of the proclamation? If not, we'll welcome you and the Health Department up for a picture with the Commission. Any comments? No. I would say, Seth, I think, you know, we're appreciative of the Health Department's work, and I know you're kind of a leader in the state on this issue and have been advocating for a lot of these issues, so thank you for your service for the state and our county. So if you guys want to come up, I'd be happy to present this.
I might just make one comment, the fact that what I'm hearing on the radio this morning regarding the effects of problems with both alcohol and drugs, that I think that was very important to get out and let people know that information. I don't know that I've ever heard anything like that before, and I think that's important that you know the overall cost, so thanks.
Candace, just move over just a little bit. There you go. Okay? And then, yellow shirt, move over just a hair. There you go. There you go. Thank you.
This time, I'd like to ask Helen from HR, she's got an announcement for an event coming up.
Good morning. Helen Foster, Reno County Human Resources Director. I wanted to let you guys know that this weekend is the weekend of United Way Community Work Day, and Reno County has put together a team. We have 36 volunteers, that is including employees and some of their family members. So at 8:15 on Saturday, August 26th, we will be at 1727 North Adams Street here in Hutchinson, painting a home. It is part of Brush It Up Hutch project, so we would like for you guys to come out and see us if you guys are in the neighborhood. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Helen. This time, we'll move to item four, public comment for items not on the agenda. If there's anyone here for that, you're welcome to come to the podium now. Seeing none, item five is additions and revisions to the agenda. Staff have any? No, it's the Commission. Hearing none. I think the only item we might need to be a little flexible for is, I guess, for item 11, it's supposed to be here at 11:00 a.m., so I might need to move things around a little Consent agenda consists of two items. Is there a motion or questions?
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Commissioner Parks moves. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bogner. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hearst?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitezel?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Item 7A is an item tabled from August 9th, a resolution designating the official county newspaper, based on kind of the current situation of other applicants along with what appeared to be kind of a change in opinion from what it sounded like a majority of the Commission. I asked staff to rewrite this for the Ninescaul Valley News. Staff have any other comments?
Not, I guess not really. I think it was all in the memo I submitted. Rural Messenger has a pending application, but as of today, they don't have formal approval from the U.S. Postal Service, which is concerning to me if we went forward with them. The Hutch News is our current paper, and they submitted a bid that was lower than what we've been paying, but the Ninescaul Valley News is lower, so it's really a choice for the Commission between those two.
Is there comments or a motion?
I just might make a comment that I think it was somewhat, what I've learned, is it some 25 years or maybe longer ago than that, that there was a history with Reno County and the Ninescaul Valley News that published the county information, and I just, and I, in conversations with Ninescaul Valley News when they called me, years ago, they provided newspapers at the courthouse when they had that, so that people could get, so that people could get the newspaper there, and so I would imagine that when asked that they would provide newspapers, a certain amount of newspapers, to both the annex as well as the courthouse, and feel confident that they would provide that access to the newspaper to the, at least those two locations, okay?
I was just going to say thank you for being here, Ms. Stuckey. I appreciate that. I appreciate being at the last meeting, and it was very informative, but I think for all of us that was here, and even Ron was on the phone, but I think it was enlightening, the conversation that we had, and I think it really, it changed my opinion upon where we need to go, and I thank you for your time. I don't think we fully had that the first go-round, and I just want to say that, you know, I will be one that'll support your newspapers.
Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Bogner to approve Resolution 202317. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Parks. Any final discussion? Commissioner, no, that was a no. Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner, Commissioner Hearst?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitezel?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes. Motion passes five zero. Nancy, did you want to say anything? Okay.
Chairman? Sorry. You remind me, in previous discussion on this, the Commission directed us to put more things on the county website, and we have been working on that with the information officer, so in addition to this, we will be making more things available on the web than we currently were.
Great. I would definitely say anything that's required to be published via print should be on our website somewhere, for sure, so. Thank you. Item 7B is a planning case, 202304. Is there staff here to present it all, or?
No, this is kind of not, it would be on the consent agenda, it would separate it since it's a resolution.
Okay.
But there wasn't any planned presentation. It's all in the memo.
Are there questions or a motion to approve?
I would move to approve my resolution.
Commissioner Hearst moves to approve.
Resolution 2023 days. Pardon?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two? Okay.
Commissioner Hearst makes a motion. Commissioner Bogner seconds that motion. Is there any other, is there discussion on the item? Or we've gone over here and over there? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hearst?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitezel?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes. Motion passes five zero. Item 8A is appointment or reappointment of Reno County Health Department Advisory Board pursuant to our Resolution 20305. You have in front of you a slate of recommendations. I think just to help move this along a little bit, I think what I would bring forward is a motion to approve this slate as recommended by the Chair to include the item that I'm abstaining for specifically. That's a little weird, but it was recommended by the Director, so that would be all 10. Does that make sense from where we're going to start?
I mean, I'd kind of like to take a step back and actually talk to these people. You know, we're pointing them to a three-year deal. I think we ought to, you know, go to an executive session, and, I mean, would an executive session be appropriate for appointed personnel, or is it just?
You can. I mean, it's a non-elected personnel, and I've researched on other issues, you can do it, even on advisory. You don't have to either. I mean, it's up to you guys how you want to proceed. The Advisory Board has a function, they have to exist, they are required for certain grants, they just give it, I had a meeting in the mother county about this the other day, like, they're kind of a sounding board and also kind of a distribution of information network, but they have a role for the county for sure, so it's up to you guys how you want to proceed.
Mr. Bogner.
Daniel, the abstain, that's you personally, or?
Yeah, I'm abstaining because I'm related to that person.
Makes sense.
So I'd call my motion dead for lack of a second.
Just a second. Well, I will second your motion.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to approve the slate as recommended by the Chair. I'll, again, note my conflict on the one I noted as abstaining from. Discussion.
I mean, does anybody else feel like we ought to talk to these people before we appoint them for a three-year stance on an advisory board?
They're not all three years.
Oh, yeah, never mind. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, up to three years, sorry. Yeah. Sorry.
I would say these are pretty hard roles to fill, and, you know, even if, you know, there's one or two, you know, you may disagree with philosophically, or, you know, may even think could do a bad job, this is just an advisory commission, and they've been vetted pretty well by staff, including administrative staff, so I think the risk is pretty low. Weight against the efforts required to equally interview all of these in executive session, I think, may be pretty, pretty rough.
So, I guess I should be acknowledged, but, so, in the matter of the abstaining, if we, and that's for you only and not for the rest of us, if that were the case for the whole board, we'd need to find a 10th person, right?
Well, I would offer, I would offer it like this, I would offer that I have a conflict on that, but the slate was offered as all 10, including that one that I'm noting a conflict with.
Okay, that makes that clear. Thank you.
You know, my reason for seconding this is because it is an advisory board. They may offer some suggestions in a policy matter, but I think that the original, final content of this comes back to the Health Board, County Commissioners, and while, yes, there may be one or two that I would change if I was going to make that decision on who gets in here, but who is on the advisory board, but I think that there was a good definition of each one of those qualities that came up, that showed on this, on the decision-making, and I believe that to, we're getting too deep in this to take, ask people and us to do an interview on these folks. These have been through the, through a pretty good vetting process, and I don't, I don't believe that it's worth the time and effort just to explore someone's political views.
Well, Ron, and I would push back on that, and it's not necessarily just to explore their political views, I mean, that might not come up at all, yeah, but, you know, I mean, I just think if we're going to appoint somebody, we ought to look them in the eye and say, hey, you know, why do you want the job, rather than relying on a piece of paper? That's just my opinion.
Any other comments?
All way in just a little bit, I have met some of these people through meetings or have been around them and know what they're doing, and I think there's a pretty good admixture now on that board with some people representing different areas of the Health Department, especially in light of some of the regs we're working on, I think it's refreshing to see some people that can shed light to that, and so perhaps, but the final authority comes back here anyway, and so we're going to make a final decision if something is not what we want, and, you know, although I agree, it would be nice for John to be able to personally interview these people, we have to put some confidence and faith in employees and Randy and Directors to do these things, and it is difficult to fill these spots, so, I mean, I think that I would move probably to go along with accepting these as well. I don't probably agree that I would agree with everything every one of them believes or thinks, or, but I don't think that would be the case in probably any situation that we come across, so, but, but I would hope that they would offer some good advisory and some things that we really, as a board, think is critical, and so.
Mr. Bogner, you want to round us out here?
Well, I think, as stated, that we've got a group that's, that's pretty well-rounded when you read through their credentials, and in enough different, bring enough expertise in different areas to create a well-rounded board, and I would be willing to go with, with that group.
Okay, I think every Commissioner's had an opportunity to comment on, on the motion that's been properly seconded. With that, we'll do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Hearst?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitezel?
No.
And Commissioner Friesen, you abstained, right?
I'm voting yes, noting my conflict on that item, so motion passes four to one. 8B is a request for proposals, Reno County, Hutchinson, Fights Addiction Fund. Candace?
Good morning. My name is Candace Davidson, and I am the Health Education and Promotion Supervisor at the Health Department. So thank you for this opportunity to talk to you today about all the great progress that the Opioid Settlement Funds Advisory Oversight Committee has made. This committee is made up of our community partners and has been meeting since March to learn about what is happening in our community, as well as to look at the data surrounding the opioid epidemic, and understand what the opioid litigation allows for spending of the funds. They have put together a quest for proposal to allocate the Kansas Fights Addiction Funds. They are planning to put the money back into the community through evidence-based practices that help to save lives from prescription opioid misuse and illicit opioid use. I'm asking that you approve the Reno County Hutchinson Fights Addiction Fund Grant Program Request for Proposal today. Any questions?
Commissioner Whitezel?
Yeah, so I would say I read through it, and some of it was good, and some of it seemed to me like, you know, more government programs or more government handouts with a, with a limited amount of money, and then what are we going to do once that money runs out? And so I guess, you know, to get my vote, once this comes out, I should note that, that I would not be for, you know, handouts to people or, you know, creating, creating more government out of this that we're going to have to find a way to pay for later, so just with, with those notes, you know, I'm fine with what we've got.
I would just like to ask particularly John, what handouts, if you don't mind levering on?
Sure, it was, and I didn't bring my notes with me on it, but, you know, there were things like, you know, handout, what's the drug?
Narcan?
Yeah, so, you know, with, you know, and there were a couple of other things in there that were just like, you know, you know, give people this, or, and so.
Were these the federal or state funds that were handed in? I don't remember. Why don't remember that?
If you, Commissioners, let me just step back a second. So this is, this funding is from, there's national litigation on opioids at the national level, then as a part of that, there's various settlements, and these are, they're suing pharmaceutical companies that created opioids and then people who distributed and marketed them overly aggressively. The state of Kansas at the Attorney General's Office has an administration program that is actually the one, the funding source for this grant, and they also are the ones who approve what ultimately happens, they're the ones we report to. The list of, I think Commissioner Whitezel might be referring to the list of potential approved, the range of possible. approved, the range of possibilities, which is, we included in the packet just so you guys could see that ultimately we have to, whatever, these RFPs will have to meet something that's in that range of possibilities, and there's not enough funds to do all of them or some of them. So what, where the committee's at in the process now is just sending out an RFP to see what we get, what proposals we get that fit the criteria, then the committee would have a recommendation eventually to this board to approve something. And I believe one of the criteria we'll look at is, shoot, I had the word in my mind, sustainability. Yeah, will be important because there's a lot of things you could do with a little bit of amount of money for a few months, but you know, it's what happens after that. But, but that's basically the rundown of the program. So where we're at now is just to see, throw, put an RFP out, see whether there are community members, whether there's elements of currently existing governmental elements that have proposals. They don't want to fund, the, the states, they don't want to approve funding for something that's already happening. They do want to see something above and beyond a normal office, but they also are, but we have to balance that with sustainability. So there's a little bit of a push-pull. But anyway, that's, that's kind of the rundown. It will come back to you guys. The committee will make a recommendation or suggestion to you guys, and ultimately you guys will have to approve spending.
So this is essentially a fact-finding deal we're voting on, once they get...
So what we are looking to do is to put the money back into the community, correct? So, and in a way that's sustainable and will also help with the opioid epidemic that is occurring.
At this point, you're trying to establish where you want to put that money to do this thing?
Yeah, so we're asking, yeah, so we're asking community members what they're doing, what they can do with this money, and how we can really affect change.
And I just, and I think the, as I recall, the idea of using a committee is kind of required as part of the grant, so it's, I think that's part of the process. Also, we're coordinating with the City of Hutchinson?
Correct.
Which we thought was important because that way, the City of Hutch also has opioid money, but we don't want to be duplicating a service or a program, so that's one of the reasons for the committee.
Is there a motion to approve the RFP?
Move to approve the RFP as presented by staff.
Commissioner Hurst moves. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'd too probably like to have a lot more information in the future, but I think you're going to present that to us with the information you come back with and having the ability to talk about it later. I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Parks. Final discussion.
And I guess I should have made this clear, but my point was, you know, as they're reviewing the different grants and things, you know, that's, that's going to be something I'm looking for. I mean, I don't know about the rest of the commission, but I just kind of wanted to go on record with what were my hopes would be once, once the grant approval process comes back to us.
Right, but this, no, this is money we already, and that's probably out of turn, I think, here, but maybe, this is money we already have coming anyway, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we have money coming, coming in, but we already have a little over $100,000, but again, we're also working with the City of Hutchinson, so there are combined monies.
Yeah, I get that.
And I believe this RFP will also go to the city?
Correct, yeah. Yes, so we will also do this, the same thing in September 5th at the City Council.
Okay.
Is this something that could help or an assist in a program that we already have for coordination with the City of Hutchinson in a drug recruit rehab center that's in there, already going?
So, we do have the litigation that was sent down that we have to follow, and part of that is that they're looking for new and innovative, but evidence-based practices that can work. So we'll see what we get. If they fall within that at Exhibit E, which is also in your packet, then we can talk about how we can help those different entities that come out, that apply for the funding.
After that very tough report that I just read yesterday regarding the near deaths that we had here with opioids, I don't know whether they were all opioids or not, but brings it home, right home.
It does. It's why we're trying to get the money back out into the community and to some great programs that we can fund.
Okay, well, you know, I, I think the, the staff report here is, is a little misleading from a fiscal point because we're, we're not, there's no fiscal impact. We're not approving anything.
We may have given you too much information, but we're not spending anything today. We're just getting, we just want to get permission to put an RFP out, just communicate with the commissioners, so if you hear about the RFP, you'll know that it's coming back to you guys when we get some answers.
Okay, I think Commissioner Bogner, you good?
Do what?
Are you good?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes, motion passes five zero. Thanks, Candace. Okay, eight C is the zombie agenda item we can't seem to kill. Sewer District 201 and 202 joint treatment facilities upgrade.
Don Britton, Director, Public Works. This is to do with the, what we're going to do with the Sewer District 201, 202, Yoder and Habit, and we brought Stuart Porter from Suave Eaton here to briefly explain where we're at in this process right now and to answer any of your questions. And if you don't have any questions for me, I'll let Stuart take over.
Okay, good morning, Commission. As Mr. Britton indicated, I'm here to answer questions relative to sewer districts 201 and 202 and the studies that have been completed. If, if you want to jump right into questions, I'm more than happy to field them. If you want to have a two-minute background of how we've gotten to where we're at, I'd be happy to provide that, too.
I think the two-minute would be appropriate.
Okay, okay. So, in, in 2018, we were hired to perform an investigation of improvements to sewer districts 201 and 202 to bring them back into compliance. One of the sewer districts had actual compliance issues, the other one had deficiencies that had been noted. So, we put together a study to bring both of those, those facilities up to current standards, and we presented that information to the County Commission, and I don't recall the, the date, but it is around 2020. And at that time, the Commission recommended that we also study the possibility of combining the two sewer districts into one facility. So, we have completed that. We have put together a preliminary engineering report and cost estimate. The cost estimate for that project is a substantial number, is $6.1 million. Recently, we were asked to also to provide a cost estimate for a second option of pumping the wastewater to the City of Hutchinson. We have completed that as well. That number is roughly $4.5 million. When we are, are faced with a public improvements project of this magnitude, one of the obvious questions, initial questions, is how are we going to fund this? So, in Kansas, the logical funding agencies that are routinely used for municipal-type projects are USDA Rural Development, KDHE's State Revolving Loan Fund, and the Community Development Block Grant Program. Of those three, the Community Development Block Grant Program has indicated that this project is not eligible based on income requirements of some of the patrons in, in the district for a combined system. So that one is off the table. So that, that leaves us with the KDHE State Revolving Loan Fund and USDA Rural Development. In June of this year, we put together a project submittal form to KDHE's State Revolving Loan Fund to be placed on the Intended Use Plan for the, the Combined Lagoon Project for 201 and 202 in the amount of $6.133 million. The result of being placed on the Intended Use Plan, KDHE came back to us and said that this project is eligible for $1 million in principal forgiveness, which is essentially grant, it's essentially grant funds. It's, it's principal that will be forgiven at the completion of the project. In order to, to secure that $1 million of principal forgiveness, we have to complete a loan application by October the 15th. And that date is quickly approaching because there are certain steps that need to be taken. There's an environment, environmental review process that has to be completed, and there's also a public hearing period that has to be advertised and then comments received by the County Commission. So in order to meet that October 15th deadline, we really do need to decide if we are going to apply for a KDHE loan. For the, the Combined Lagoon Project, the $6.133 million project, it is logical to, to ask, well, how do we apply for one form of funding if we don't know how we're going to get all of the funding? And that's a legitimate question. The reality is that Rural Development, USDA Rural Development is an important funding piece. They have both loan, loan dollars available and grant funds available, but they will not apply grant funds to a project until all other funding sources are known. So the first domino that needs to fall is securing the KDHE State Revolving Loan with that associated principal forgiveness. One other kind of a wild card right now is we also submitted an application for a KDHE, this is a one-time program, a KDHE small-town grant application. We applied in the amount of $2 million. There's $5 million anticipated for sewer improvements projects across the state. I do believe that there is a legitimate chance we'll get some of that money. Will we get $2 million? Don't know. And we will know that, we are supposed to know that by the end of August, but we don't know yet. But in order to keep the process moving, we really do need to be moving forward with the, the State Revolving Loan Fund application. So, I, I guess I, I'm, I'm here to answer questions about the onsite Lagoon Improvements Project, as well as the option for pumping wastewater to Hutchinson. My opinion is that the pumping to wastewater to Hutchinson option presents some challenges and some, and I have some concerns with it. I think you would have some concerns with it, too, but I don't know how far in the weeds you want to get on that option. So I'm here to answer questions.
Questions?
What's the problems with going to the Hutch connection?
Okay.
We might as well hear them first.
Okay, so I, I would, some of these are, are opinions, some of them are based on other communities that I've worked with and some of the challenges we've been through on municipal projects in the past. To start, we did meet with the, the Hutchinson City Commission during the, one of the COVID years, so we met virtually, and at that time, they voted that they did not want to receive the wastewater. I believe that, that maybe commissioners have changed, and I've been told that there's a possibility that they, they legitimately would take the wastewater. The, the first concern that I have is what is going to be the cost? We don't know the cost, and in many cases, determining the cost of wastewater treatment requires a study. Sometimes that's a fairly lengthy study. So what I did is I went online and I pulled up Hutchinson's current wastewater cost for their, for their existing customers. Now, this is not a bulk connection, this would be individual connections, but they charge $2.50 per 100 cubic feet of wastewater. I've converted that, it's $3.34 per 1,000 gallons, and if we take our projected wastewater flow and prorate that out over the, the total growth anticipated in the next 20 years that is indicated in the preliminary engineering report, the wastewater treatment cost at that rate would be roughly $100,000 a year. It's a significant number. Now, would you all or we all be able to negotiate some reduced wastewater treatment cost? Maybe, but we don't know that. So, so that would be one concern. There are numerous other concerns. One would be, we have to cross the Arkansas River with a pressurized sewer force main line. I've been advised that the road right-of-way has been closed along the most logical route to connect the two sewer districts south of the highway and south of the river to the City of Hutchinson's wastewater treatment plant. So an easement would have to be procured. Is that doable? And what, how, what amount of time would that take? I, we don't know. So that's a, that's a hurdle for sure, and there are some environmental concerns of crossing a river with a force main. I'm not going to say those are not environmental concerns that can't be mitigated, but they come with a cost. Hutchinson would likely monitor wastewater strength, you know, how, how, how much treatment is required to adequately treat this wastewater. That's not an, an overly problematic concern, but it is a concern when we have facilities like meat processing facilities or food processing facilities or whatnot, because they're going to treat the wastewater at the point of connection, which would be at the wastewater treatment plant. But then it would become the county's responsibility to adequately prorate those charges back to the, to the, if you want to call it the violator, the, the person that is producing that wastewater. Well, that is challenging because in order to accurately know the strength of wastewater at a particular connection, you have to test it. And there's not an easy way to test it. There's a way to do it, but it's expensive. So that would be a, a concern of, of mine. How would we properly bill the highest-strength wastewater generators? That's a challenge. I'm not saying it's not, it's insurmountable, but it's, it's a challenge. So I would certainly consider that. Another thing would be accurately monitoring actual wastewater flows. Keep in mind, if you were pumping to Hutchinson, you are going to be paying for every gallon of water that is pumped. So that also, that includes true wastewater, you know, sewage, but it also includes inflow and infiltration. So when it rains, there isn't a sanitary sewer system out there that is 100% leak-free, so any rainwater that gets in, we're going to be paying to treat that wastewater. Part of this project is to improve the collection system of the Habit facility. So we're going to reduce, in theory, we are going to reduce substantially the amount of inflow and infiltration that will be flowing into the, the Habit system, but there will still be some. It's inevitable. So we would have to be paying to treat that wastewater, whereas a lagoon facility, there really isn't any additional cost to, to handle that stormwater that comes into it. Additionally, accurately monitoring the amount of, of flow, we were talking about the strength of waste a little accurately monitoring the amount of of flow. We were talking about the strength of waste a little bit ago. Accurately monitoring the amount of flow that any one of these wastewater generators is putting into the system can be challenging. Obviously, we we do that in municipal facilities using potable water flow. But that's not the case at every one of these connections. We're aware of at least one that is on their own well. So they have their own well and they're a major wastewater generator. So how do we monitor that flow? That's that's a challenge. We are. We also have in the habit facility, we have a rural water district that we are not in control of that is providing water to these businesses, but we are going to be businesses and residences. But we are going to be taking that wastewater. So it would require coordination and cooperation that they are going to provide their water use records to us to in turn bill the respective customers. So those would be my major talking points. I there's probably a few other things that we could flush out, but those are the big ones that 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 make the pumping to Hutchinson option problematic in my view. I would also leave with this con or finish with this comment that earlier I alluded to if we if we use the published wastewater treatment costs that Hutchinson has and we prorate that out to the anticipated flow that we are planning for for the full build out of the system and that being roughly a hundred thousand dollars a year. Technically, it calculates to be a hundred and one thousand dollars. If we take that amount of annual cost and we do a debt service amortization on it using the interest rates that we would be looking at from the KDHG loan and also USDA financing, roughly two and a quarter to 2.75%. That hundred and one thousand dollars annually would equate to a a debt service payment that would service 1.6 million dollars in debt over a period of 20 years. So if we take the 4.5 million dollar project and we add 1.6 million dollars to it, we're at 6.1 million dollars, which is essentially the same cost as the proposed lagoon project for sewer districts two oh one and two oh two. So with all of the other unknowns and difficulties, I truly believe that the option of treating wastewater onsite in a new lagoon facility is the county's and the sewer districts best long term move. It is an expensive project. I don't I don't doubt that for a second, but I do believe that that is the the county's best long term solution.
Mr. Parks.
Yeah, sorry. To follow up, Ben, as I started this a little bit, to follow up on maybe granting to help pay for some of this, would that flow either direction with the pumping to Hutchinson? And the lagoon, there's a possibility of procuring some of that?
Yes. So the applications that have been submitted thus far.
I mean, just to be fair in the conversation.
Absolutely, absolutely. So the applications that have been submitted thus thus far do reference the onsite lagoon option, the 6.1 million dollar project. But I do believe that those funds could be funneled into the the pumping to Hutchinson option. I do believe that, yes. It may take a letter, you know, explaining the change, but I do believe that that is a possibility.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You know, I know I've voiced a number of concerns on this project and its cost and whether we're making the right decision. I, you know, I think I'm quite outnumbered on some of my opinions here, but the thing the that's really bothering me still is like, how are we going to pay for this? And and I've I just did some back of the napkin math. You know, we have about 200 users. Is that right?
There's actually close to 100 users.
Okay, that makes it much worse. And then what percentage of the usage are we expecting? Or do we know? I think KLTCs are going to be our biggest user. Do you know what percentage?
Well, I can give you a a pretty good estimate based on 2022 water usage. In 2022, the law enforcement training center used roughly 17.4% of the total wastewater generated. Now, some of the wastewater that's generated is an estimate. So I use I said 17.4. I I would use roughly 17% as a as a number. But the calculations show that they are generating roughly 17% of the total.
Okay, so just check my math here. I've, based on what you said today, I'm guessing it's going to be out of pocket for us, four million dollars. Is that fair?
Well, i- in my opinion, the only way this project moves forward is with substantial grant funds. So so at the current time, we have a total project cost of 6.1 million dollars. We know that KDHG will dedicate a million dollars of principal forgiveness. That is already earmarked. We just have to apply for it. We have applied for the small town grant that I mentioned earlier. We applied at the amount of two million dollars. I do not know if we will be successful in that. I think there's a really good chance. I I've had multiple conversations with KDHG about this. They like this project. They know this project is important and necessary. I believe that that there's a good chance that the the sewer districts could get some of that that small town grant money. USDA rural development is committed to rural infrastructure. I believe that they will put some grant dollars into this project. So so is it four million dollars of of money that would be required to be paid back? Or is it three million dollars? Or is it, you know, somewhere?
Well, let's just use your best case. Best case, three million?
Yes.
Okay, so at three million, if you run an amortization over 30 years, 40 years?
Forty years with USDA.
At 2.75%, which sounds really, really good in today's environment.
Well, that is that is the intermediate interest rate for USDA rural development. That is a that is a published number and that is that is a number. It's federally subsidized interest rate.
That's a lottery.
So that's a annual P and I payment of 125,000 dollars roughly. Hopefully excelled. I mean, I think it's right. So.
That you're correct.
Yeah. And so at 100 users, at 70 bucks a month. And I heard 55 was the number we were shooting for, but at 70 bucks a month plus the nine commercial, I think we have 10, so I'm subtracting KLTC. I put them at 150. We're still short about 24,000, which is a $2,000 a month payment from KLTC, which is 20% of the total bill. What did you say they're they're at? 15?
They're, based on last year's data, my calculations show they are using approximately 17% of the wastewater. I would also add that based on their projections of growth in the in the future, they will use, once again, their numbers. They will use or generate 48% of the total wastewater flow at the facility. I mean, it's a substantial number. And that's another philosophical debate we can have. Do we build for what they tell us they're going to grow to? I mean, that's that's one of those those challenging questions. I don't think we need to debate that here.
Well, I'm I'm just trying to ma- I'm just making sure that we don't do all of this and then we're like, people aren't going to pay this. They're going to start looking for septic systems and we're going to have kind of a collapsing utility fund because they can't, you know, they're all of a sudden we have 50 users and then we put it all on KLTC. I mean, are they? Have we talked to them about paying? You know? And it changes dramatically from three to four million. I mean, three million looks pretty pretty okay. I mean, if if users are willing to pay 70 bucks, commercial users 150, KLTC 2,000 a month, it pencils out. So I just I just want like, like, I've never you know, from a business perspective, never bought anything without knowing where how I'm going to pay for it. And I feel like we're gonna I I want to make sure we have a a way to pay for what we're, especially at this cost.
That is a very fair statement. I'd like to go back to what I said just a little bit ago. You said best case scenario for funding mix. I said three million dollars of of principal to pay back. There there are legitimate possibilities of getting that number down into the two million dollar range. But it all hinges on which grants are going to be procured and which grants are not. And we don't know that right now. So your comment about not knowing how we're going to pay for it and making decisions, you know, not knowing how we're going to pay for it. That is, that's a very solid comment. I I don't disagree with you. The way the dominos fall on these projects, however, is USDA and I had a conversation with the state director yesterday about this project. USDA is typically the last person to or the last entity to commit funds to a project like this because they have discretionary grant funds. And what they will do with their funds is they will try to apply grant dollars as their program allows to keep residential user rates in the 45 to 55 dollar range. In today's dollars, I would call that closer to 50 to 55 dollar range. But that is what they use their grant funds for. And they will be the last ones to tell us how many grant funds they're going to apply to this project. The the upside to the state revolving loan fund is there's, aside from the administrative costs, the overhead costs associated with applying. So that would be some of your engineering costs and your grant or excuse me, loan administration application fees. You do. You are not obligated to utilize those funds. So if the total funding package for the project is not able to be procured, there is no obligation for you to move forward with that particular, any particular project. But I can assure you that KDHG will require you to make improvements to those two facilities and bring them into compliance in some fashion. And the reality is there is no simple way to bring both of them into compliance. You know, co- co- low cost option to bring them into compliance. It is this. It's a it's a difficult project.
And just one other thing I wanted to note here. I mean, do we have our operational costs estimated?
Yes, they are dialed.
Well, how much are those per year?
So in the engineering report, we have indicated based on past records, an annual O and M cost of 45,000 dollars a year. And we've also earmarked 6,500 dollars a year for a short-lived assets reserve. So things like pump replacement, other equipment replacement fund, basically.
Well, okay, I mean, I'm just trying to dial this. It looks like it has to be about a million dollar project out of pocket. For us to be at 55 dollars a month and KLTC to pay 20% of the difference, but I guess what you're saying is we have to roll the dice to get these other subsidizing entities to respond.
Well, I don't know if I would call it rolling the dice. I I do understand what you're saying. I've gone through some preliminary debt service analysis. I have not intentionally not shared that with you because there are so many unknowns. You can pick it apart. But there are opportunities to to get the end user rates legitimately down into the 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 50 dollar range with USDA rural development being one of our partners on this project. And it's it's imperative that this will be a multiple in multiple funding agency project. It will be, if it moves forward, it will be a state revolving loan fund project coupled with USDA rural development. That's the only way that I know of to make it affordable.
But do you agree it has to be about a million dollar project to to be in the 55 dollar range?
No. No. And and it depends on where, at what point in time we look at at user fees and and how much of the flow the law enforcement training center is being responsible for.
I put 20%.
Okay, at in, keep in mind, using their data, they have told us in year 2040, they are going to be generating 48% of the flow from the combined facilities.
Well, at 2040, did you say?
2040.
Okay, I mean, let's just focus on the next five years, like what?
Sure.
What the average user is going to pay, right? And if it's 55 bucks a month, like debt service is on a million dollars is 41,000, right? And then you add 45,000, 6,500, that's 93,000 a year in in cost. And at 55, 100 meters times 12, 66,000, you're you're short 30.
Are are you amortizing that out of a over a 20 year period or a 40 year period?
Forty at 2.75. It's not a big payment. Like, it's a million dollars. It's 41,000 a year.
Is that based on average for each user?
55 bucks.
Okay, so.
But you've got you've got other users that are a lot higher than that.
Yes.
You've got at least four, maybe five.
Well, you're still short 20 grand.
That are that are going to you pay a lot more than just the average 50 dollars.
So in a in a rough debt service analysis, I show a scenario where the residential users would be at approximately 55 dollars a month. And I applied, I applied for the light commercial users. I count 27 of them. I'm showing a rate of double the residential users. Now, all of this is dependent on county commission decisions, but in my analysis, I said that a light commercial user is is double the load of a residential. Now, that may or may not be true. And we recognize that your businesses are out there, so we don't want to, we don't want to harm them. But I, just for argument's sake, I used a a rate of two times the residential rate for light commercial. I use three times the residential rate for heavy commercial. And that is not applying any particular surcharge, if you will, to the high strength generators. And we know that you have some. So there are lots of ways to structure a sewer rate. But in doing that and then applying 17 But in doing that and then applying seventeen point four percent at, uh, to the law enforcement training center, I show that it, that it balances, or it, it is a, it is, um, sustainable a, at those rates and.
At what, what out-of-pocket number?
Um, the out-of-pocket number in my analysis, uh, at that, at that funding level is thirty-f, so that is a thirty-five percent rural development grant amount. And, uh, the amount to be financed is two point oh three million dollars.
Okay. I'm just looking at different math here, but what, what's your debt service? Payment?
The annual debt service payment? Um, eighty-four thousand in that scenario.
That's about what I have. And you add the forty-five and the?
And the sixty-five hundred.
Okay.
I mean, i- i- in, in the big picture, everything is theoretical right now until we start to hone in on all of the grant funds that are available, because they are so significant in a project like this. But like we said, it kind of at the outset, the first domino to fall is to secure the K D H E state revolving loan fund dollars, because if we don't secure those, they will go to someone else. And that only, the application process is only once a year to get the principal forgiveness.
Question?
Yeah, I do, on a follow-up, as I understood your presentation, either way we go, we're going to be in that six point one area. Because time you secure right aways and all that stuff, additional costs could mount up to that. Ju- just to put that to bed, so that it's going to be a pretty, pretty close for both.
I, I, I'd like to clarify that statement.
Yeah.
The estimated cost of the pumping option is four point five million dollars. And we don't know for sure what wastewater treatment is going to cost. And that may take weeks or months for Hutchinson to get back to us. But if I use the, the wastewater treatment costs that they publish on their website for, for in, in town or out of town, uh, customers that pay based on the number of cubic feet of wastewater treated, um, that number is a hundred thousand dollars. And if I apply that backwards to see how much debt that hundred thousand dollars would service, it's one point six million dollars. So the, um, the, the, the total amount of the cost, if, uh, if we include the wastewater treatment cost is really, really close to the same number.
Yeah. Now, the other follow-up I had, we were under the impression here for some time, two hundred users, residential users. You're putting out a figure of a hundred. But my question, not that I'd want to take anybody off septic that's out there, is there a real possibility in the future that there are some septics out there that fail, they would be on the system? Now, I wouldn't want to do that to anybody, but i- is some of the residential out there still on septic in some of those tight areas? Because they, they perhaps might not be approved to have a septic put back in, and they could connect up. I don't know if Don can answer to that or not, but, um, I, I, you know, I don't want to impose that on necessarily anybody, but is there a potential for more users in the future? We keep looking at bigger numbers for commercial, but what about residential?
Yes.
Connecting to this in the future?
Uh, um, absolutely, addition, it would have growth built, or the ability to grow built into the system, absolutely. And I do believe.
I mean, existing households, if some of them excluded for various reasons, that they're not going to be connected.
Well, we are, no, we are using account of the current customers of sewer districts two oh one and two oh two. I do believe that maybe some of the, um, um, uh, confusion lies around number of connections versus number of people that are benefiting. So there probably are a couple hundred people out there, but there's only residential. Um, my count shows seventy-six connections, and that's how many bills get sent out. So all of the financial, uh, calculations need to be based on the number of.
But to answer that question, in the future, there could be possible new connections and that, not necessarily new construction, but new connections through people there. I mean, years ago in Hutch, they did the Arthur Street project out there, where most of them were still on septic tanks, and that's on city sewer now, so. But I mean, that is, I, I just needed to, to know that there's potentials there too, because that would help too.
Absolutely.
One thing that I, in past experience in the city of South Hutchinson, was the fact that it is very time-consuming and costly to develop a system to attract the B O D content of different facilities. And not only within a week time or a day's time, but within morning, afternoon, evening time. They vary so much depending upon one activity, uh, including even, uh, restaurants. Uh, but the, uh, the meatpacking facility down there, as well as maybe some of the, uh, uh, other manufacturing facilities down there, that we don't know what their content is. And to develop a line, uh, into Hutchinson, uh, that would not sour, but yet has enough, uh, capacity to handle, uh, additional, uh, say a hundred thousand gallons a day. Uh, and I don't know what that number is, that would, would trigger a situation to where the size becomes a problem. But that's the thing that, that, that bothers me a little bit about coming to Hutchinson, that's one of those things. And the other was if, uh, uh, their ability to service it in ten years, or five years, or ten years, depending upon what comes into Hutchinson that's going to need a, uh, additional, water supply to handle they, or processing gallonage. If they say, okay, you, you're good now at X amount of gallons a day, but you can't go over that. Then, or, or if you do, in, in order to satisfy everybody, we're going to have to add on, we're going to have to upgrade. And so then the rates are going to go up more. And based upon, I was interested with that hundred thousand that you talked about, uh, after done that research. And, and how it relates back to ability to have that service. That's an interesting, very interesting to me.
But maybe we could speed this on a little bit and just, is there anyone here advocating at this point in time for the connection to the Hutch wastewater treatment facility? Okay. So what? Let's keep going, I'm just saying, like, we don't, we don't need to argue that.
No, we're not.
Much further.
I think one of the things we need to do is kind of get started on one project or another one, and we need to get started since we've already purchased the land, is to get started with this K D H E and rural development. That, that's a priority regardless, no matter which way, but that, that's got to be done, got to be started quickly. And, and are those, some of those grants still tied to a scoring system? They're a little different than C D B G, aren't they?
You are correct. Um, they, um, so, so K D H E has sort of a scoring system, and you've already scored sufficiently high that you're earmarked for the principal forgiveness. Um, there will be a scoring system, and we don't know what it is for this small-town grant that we were talking about earlier. We will know that, the results of that literally next week, we're told. But I can't tell you today what the results of that are going to be. As far as USDA, their scoring system is, they use end residential user rates as their, their scoring system, and they ramp up grant dollars ne- as necessary to keep the end user rates, in theory, in that fif- fifty to fifty-five dollar range. Now, there are projects that have outlying conditions, and I'm not going to say that this isn't, that it can't be one of them. But with all of the information we have right now, they are very much behind this project. They want to see this project move forward, they know that it's necessary with the compliance issues. And I fully expect them to figure out a way to keep this project affordable to your residential customers and to all customers.
I know in, in, uh, dealing with other grants around that, uh, scoring system depends upon how much dollars that the local puts in this. Is that kind of related to this, or is it more of a need to keep rates where they should?
With, with the, the two funding mechanisms that we are, um, uh, proposing to use, uh, you are correct, they will look for local participation. We've already checked that box because of the relatively large number that is remaining. So, so that box is checked, but so then the second box to check is to keep the user rates down.
I think that's a lot of group information we didn't have before, myself.
I do too.
And I appreciate that.
Mr. Weitzel?
Yeah, I was just kind of thinking to myself, wouldn't it be cheaper to just give everybody a septic system and add that to the projects? But obviously, that's not an option, but.
Not necessarily, talk to the contractors.
That's kind of like, that's kind of like our, our individual house R O system, isn't it? Yeah.
Any other questions? Yeah, motion would be great.
To get it off the ground and get started, uh, I would move to direct staff to move forward with a joint lagoon system as, uh, outlined in the information provided to us. That would, that would get us started, wouldn't it?
I'll second.
So motion is second, final discussion. What, what are we approving today? Are we approving expenditures?
No, you're just giving staff and the engineers' direction to go through the applications that are necessary.
Any other questions? Roll call, please. Don, do you have? Oh.
I, I hope we come to the conclusion of what project we're going to do, either take it to the city or creating the settlement to happen.
Well, Commissioner Hurst, uh, moved for, uh, item one, which is to direct, to move forward with a joint lagoon system.
Is item one, joint lagoon system, could be to the city or habit, so is it, does it say inhabit?
No, there's two separate items in there.
Are we clear? Okay, so, and that was your motion, right?
That was my motion, yes.
Okay, and that solves your question? Okay. Yep.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes, motion pacified zero. Thanks for your patience, Don.
May I make one more comment, sir?
Hey, I seen a smile on his face for a minute.
I, I. Well, being the tight one, one of the tight ones up here, and we all look after taxpayers' money. I will say one thing on this fees, that I saw nine point six percent engineering fees on a project. I would anticipate that there will be no overruns, or no mistakes made with that. Okay? Because I'm going to be very, very hard on anything missed with that, because I, you've got a pretty nice contingency in there. And that, that sounds to me like you've really studied hard on this. And so I would just, that's my comment, not a question, just a comment, that I anticipate no cost overruns.
You guys, you better watch out, we might appoint Commissioner Hurst to go to all your meetings.
And his knee might be good by them kicking.
Okay, thanks for your time, appreciate all the efforts on that. Uh, Randy, your reports?
Okay, I have the monthly department reports from emergency management, health, H R, I T, public works, treasurer, and these services. I scrolled through those and read them, I didn't see anything, you know, an outline issue, but I want to see if any commissioner.
All right, the financial reports are also in here. Again, nothing really to clarify or to point out, but revenues are obviously through July almost at a hundred percent, so that's really good, and a lot of that is interest. Interest and sales taxes are above the budgeted number, so that's what's helping offset their, offset property taxes in a way. Expenditures, I will note that most departments are right around the fifty to fifty, wow, register these fifty-six, oh, you know, in those areas. With the twenty-three budget, and then again in twenty-four budget, there's not a lot of cushion in each department. So they will be spending the majority of their budgeted amounts because of the way we've done much as the past couple years, so. As we get closer to the end of the year, you're going to notice some departments look like they're not going to have very loo- much money to finish the year. There may be some that go over because of overtime or costs that are beyond our control. So I just kind of wanted to bring that up. Any questions on the financial report? I think most of the departments, or the funds, I shouldn't say departments, funds, their cash balances are healthy right now, so they are going up.
Do we have any, um, any, uh, in, um, I guess input back yet on the meetings between the, um, the courts and the sheriff and the, as far as like the jail?
I believe the district attorney, and I did send him your email, district attorney has met with a group, but I have not heard back from, about that. I believe Tom has reached out to a group.
Yeah, I think that we talked to the sheriff a little bit, just a little bit yesterday, and I know he, he felt like it was a productive meeting, was my understanding. I think that was the meeting he was talking about.
Is that?
Uh, yeah, yeah. So I don't think anything concrete, but they were definitely, um, I don't want to speak on behalf of Sheriff Campbell, but he, he said there was some good discussion on how they can try and improve things, yeah.
What specifics in that refresh memories?
Just, they, he's looking at, um, oh, i- it's a very convoluted process, involves the court system, their docketing, their continuance of cases, which when that happens, it leaves people in the jail system longer, which ends up being a county expense. So it's a, i- it's one of those problems like a lot of things that requires multiple agencies to get on the same page, uh, which is difficult. But they are talking to each other and working on stuff, is my understanding.
And I do believe the sheriff, and he's not here to explain this, but did mention yesterday in our, um, quick meeting that the clients at the jail are, uh, at pretty high levels. So if that doesn't change, and when I say clients, I mean the prisoners or inmates, the confined peep, you know, individuals that if it goes to a certain point, because we don't have the staffing, we have the facility, just not staffing, that we may have to farm out, um, those inmates at some point if, if, if things don't change, if that makes sense.
It's kind of like, I guess, holding people for maybe misdemeanors or things that they're not a threat to society.
Yeah, and, and they're working on processes on how to release people pending jail. And they're also talking to, it, it's convoluted because it involves the defense attorneys, legal aid, and the, and the judges have to buy into it, and then the, the agencies have to be willing to, uh, not parole, but, you know, let people leave jail and, and come to their court date, so it's, it's complicated. But there, I just, he said they were working on it and talking to each other and trying to get that done. But yeah, when those people are waiting in jail for their court date, then the county has to pay for them to be in jail, so it's a problem.
That's the thing I had a conversation with, and I think, I don't know whether I brought it up before or not, is, uh, prior to COVID, Douglas County was releasing prisoners with ankle bracelets. That were not a immediate threat to society that had a job, had a family. There was some things that went into effect of that, that they, that they didn't need to be in the jail. That they could be functioning at home and waiting their time. And would keep a whole lot better system going with that, and it also would save a lot of money. And, uh, so that's something. So that's something that I think needs to be looked at, and I spoke with the sheriff a minute about it, but in the future. But here again, you got to get everybody on the same page.
I don't want to speak on Sheriff Campbell, he would explain it better than I did, but just, we were talking the other day, and it sounds like they were having some meetings about it.
Another, I wanted to see if a special study session, if you guys would be willing to have one following September 13th meeting to discuss kind of a master plan of space needs, a study that shape architecture brought back with some of the departments such as emergency management, share different agents, departments or agencies that can need more space, so you guys can get kind of an overview, presentation of what those results were, and maybe start having discussions in the study session of what are the next steps. If. I want to see. Try to keep the agenda light on the business side, so that you aren't here all day, and expect that to last maybe one or two hours after the normal meeting.
That's not during fair time, though, is it? That's 17th on, correct?
That is the first turn.
Not that that takes precedence, but I'm just saying that some of us had commitments up there during the day already. I don't know, I'd have to look at my calendar.
Yeah.
I know you might, too, so, yeah.
The other, I had met yesterday with the interim city manager at Hutchinson, and we were talking about a joint meeting. I kind of put that in one of my weekly reports to the commission. So I wanted to see if in October, I'm looking for something in October, if there is a Tuesday or Wednesday that would work, if the county hosted the joint meeting. It would either be after a city council meeting on the first and third Tuesdays, or after a county commission meeting on the second, fourth, second or fourth of Wednesdays. Kind of want to make sure everyone's available and see if you have a preference.
My preference, we're hosting, you said? Make it on our day.
This is in October?
Yes.
How close is that to the open house at the emergency? Wouldn't fall on the same day, would it, somewhere?
I'm not sure what that day is.
They're celebrating their 40 years, and I just wondered how that'd fall along with that.
You happen to know that?
And I don't think that's an unreasonable request, because, you know, all those guys live in the city, but some of y'all don't, and so you got a lot further to drive in for something like that. So if we make it on our day, then everybody's already here.
October 10th or 11th or 25th. So, hours for. Sure, okay. 11th. 11th. Be 11th. 11th, say it again. 11th or 25th. Oh, okay. Wait, this is second. So. Pretty hard to predict. What's that, everybody else is good?
I'm good either one of them, probably, so.
Put us off, hold on, 25th of October. Check in on the animal, so we see how everybody's status looks.
Is that okay?
And then I've got one more thing. So I have, so just to make everybody aware, I'm going to probably send Carla an email this week. I, I'm sure, I'll have to go back through my emails, but I'm pretty sure I'd asked her for, to be copied on what codes that the health department is billing for, and I haven't received that list yet, because I, my understanding is maybe she was going to send forward that to the partners in the community to look for duplications of services. And if they've got the billing codes versus, you know, general descriptions, then the other, the other entities can say, okay, yeah, we do this billing code, as opposed to, you know, you know, we work on bones, or, you know, stuff like that.
I will, I will tell you that she does have that spreadsheet, the comparison spreadsheet. She is, you know, kind of finishing that up. So, and I think she explained to me on the codes, the way that the health department operates and bills isn't the same as like a, for insurance on medical. So, and that would be maybe a conversation with Carla, and if you want to meet with her and get with me, we can have a meeting to kind of go over that, that part of it. But the summary, the comparison is in the works, and as soon as we're done with environmental health regulation, just because there's so many things going on.
Right, yeah, no, I figured she was busy, but.
Be brought back to the commission.
Well, we've had that conversation, you and I.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
Well, and, I mean, just to clarify protocol, like, your questioning should go to Randy, and he should go to Carla.
Oh, yeah, no, I just wanted to be, be copied on the list that's, that we, you know, of services that we offer, was all I was.
Brilliant. Anything else, Randy?
That's all I had.
Patrick, you got anything else?
No, good, no.
County commissioner reports, Commissioner Parks, we've only ever started with you, so maybe we.
Hallelujah. Well, I don't normally have a whole lot to say, but I can't remember the exact dates. I am going to another state, a meeting that'll be in Wichita for county commissioners. I wanted to go and see what's up with that, what's going on, maybe some current information. I have used that from time to time to glean some information I think's pertinent. But a couple of the quick items, I've had some calls in the last week from several people, different issues, but I thought, I thought one was kind of enlightening in an area I was sharing with Adam earlier, that a lady called and she was complaining about the blocking of one or two intersections with trains. They're quite long now, and that can happen, and they seem to sit there for an extended period of time. I know I'm south of town out there, and there's a lot of times they'll cover two intersections from Whiteside on down to Dean Road, and that is kind of disturbing for some people for emergency response, and Randy and I talked about it, and I knew there probably wasn't anything we could do about it anymore, and there's not. But she brought up an interesting point, and I thought it would be a good point for her to go, I told her about the open house for emergency in 911, to go and visit with the director there, and she was kind of excited to be able to go through that that day. But her question was, is there any communication between that train and emergency services to let them know? And I thought I would ask Adam, he wasn't aware of any, but that'd be a good question for, I can't remember, who's the director? I can't remember his name, I don't know why it's gay. Yeah. And it'd be a good, good conversation to have with him, but in the age of technology we have, I don't know why they couldn't accommodate that, say, hey, we're here for two hours blocking these, so that they would know to reroute. And that, that was a legitimate question. I don't know that anything can be done about it, but I told her I would go and ask that, and to have her do that, too. Secondly, I had another one that goes along with our KDHE regs that we're trying to.
Did you want Adam to respond while he's here?
Oh, well, you can.
He sat here all meeting, so.
Yeah, we need to get him up off, so his legs don't go asleep.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for that. Adam Weiser, emergency management director. I talked to Commissioner Parks shortly before the meeting about this issue that I'm aware of, that train services do not contact any emergency services when they're going to block the tracks for any sort of time. We have pretty good communication with them when there's something going on, we need the track shut down, they do that pretty rapidly for us. We can page that out across the districts, but as far as they're going to block an intersection, we don't get notified.
Yeah.
Yeah, Don's got, has an update on this, maybe?
Good.
Yeah, here while back, the railroad asked us to give us a easement to use part of our property on north of old K-61, they're north of Midora, and we granted them that. And the reason for that is they're building a spur from that point north to eliminate, it's a long enough spur to eliminate this problem. That's what they told me that was for, that's why I was, I thought we were grateful and give them that easement, so they could get started, and they have started on it.
Good. Alleviate some of it, that's good.
Well, can we, can we not contact them and ask them to communicate when they're blocking roads?
We have really limited communication with any of the train services in town, and I don't think they'll ever call us and let us know they're blocking, to be frank with you.
Whoa, and we have no legal authority?
So, the trains are federally regulated, and to be completely, there's been a series of court battles, but basically, the regulations of trains goes back to the beginning of trains, if you want to get, if you really want to dig into a rabbit hole of history, when it was a federal, it was really a federal program to let train tracks happen, and they've just always, there's a reason that the term railroad it exists, is trains kind of have a lot of power. But they're federally regulated, but what we can do, and what we do do is pass along concerns, and eventually it can lead to something like a rail spur, so that those, so they can get, so that when they're parked, they have a better place to park than in front of the roads. That's what the spurs do. But it's really, we are really limited in what we can do.
Why don't we invite them to come to our meeting?
Well, I would, and my question was, in the age of technology, which you know far better than I do, why, when they're communicating, I guarantee you, GPS-wise, they know exactly where that train's at at all times, why couldn't there be something communicated to emergency services? That would be a great conversation, and, hey, we're here for two hours blocking these intersections. I mean, he already did a presentation a couple of weeks ago, I said, you know, they're sitting in front of three mouses, four screens, and all that kind of information pops up continually. Not that they need something else to look at, but they would know that if they needed to reference it. Yeah, it'd be a great thing across the United States if it could get started.
Well, is there any opposition, or is there agreement, maybe we should just ask the Union Pacific Railroad to come visit with us?
I think it'd be awesome.
Okay.
Probably.
Can always ask, and after all, they build a brand-new spur out there west of Whiteside elevator that evidently isn't working like they wanted it to.
Yeah, they still cover it, cover the intersection all the time.
Yeah.
Still you, Commissioner Parks?
Okay, one last thing. I did speak with a gentleman, and I'm glad you brought that up, stop that, that's good, that had something to do with the regs we're working on, Ron Vincent's here, and this gentleman lives in the, in the community, I won't divulge his name, but he would like to probably at some point come share his information and his experience of what he'd done, and I think it'd be a great thing to do. He had purchased a parcel of land with a house on it, just shy of two acres, went through the process that a lot of you have been in here in concerns in the meetings we've had, with not having adequate acreage to be able to put his septic system in, so he had to put an anaerobic system in. But even through that, he was required to purchase the lot next to him, and almost four acres, before he could put that in. And, and it speaks well to where we're going with the new regs, that it would have helped him tremendously. He had moved here from Greensburg, I'll just throw that out there, where his, he was destroyed, they moved here. He has since paid his house off, yet it encumbered him to the, to the amount to do that of about $45,000, from my understanding, to have a septic tank put in. And, and that really bothers me, because, I mean, we can't back up and fix it for the gentleman, but I think we're moving forward to fix that problem, and I think it'll be a great thing that, that might happen to reduce the cost and ease for the contractors. I wanted to throw that out, but he said, I don't expect anything out of it, but he said, what I'd like to do is be the poster child. I'm not so sure that he might not be somebody that Josh Barkley was referring to in some of the conversations that we've had, but, I mean, if it's something, I've tried to convince him to get ahold of you and see whether that, that he'd be interested in coming. He couldn't make this for public comments today, somebody in his family was having surgery, and so, but I encouraged him to come speak before the, before the commission to, to share that information so the public would know. He said, so someone else doesn't have to go through this, and he wanted to know where we was at. And so I was glad to sit in on the last meeting that you guys had with the contractors and the public, I, I thought it went fairly well. I had some questions, because the language that came out was, it's not as simple as just going to the state regs, and that concerned me, that's why I wanted to be here. But for those of you who weren't here, I wanted to speak publicly to say that that was an area, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that was an area where we were going to build a portion of that regulation in for the governance of some existing practices and policies, i.e. registrations, that kind of stuff, in case we missed something that we'd be able to add, add to that, that were currently were approved by, by the health department and KDHE to use, so we didn't have to go through this whole process again to add things.
Yeah, you know, as soon as committed, the chair asked me if I had anything, and then I thought, as soon as you moved on, I wish I'd said something about the sanitation meeting that we had.
Yeah, help you out.
But no, I think we, so the, it's not quite, when I, when I say it's not as easy as just adopting the state regs, it doesn't exist in a prepackaged format, we can just copy and paste. But when, what we were doing at the, what we've done in the sanitation draft that we have in the new regs is refer back to the state minimal standards everywhere we can, and then in addition to that, we have a list of, which you were referring to, the addendum that says, here's practices that you won't find in the state, state regs, but they're pre-approved. So where that process is at, we had our first contractor meeting, and we had, yeah, Mr. Vincent was here, and some other contractors, we got feedback from them. Based on that, Carla and her staff sent out a revised edition of that for them to look at again. Then we have a second follow meeting with contractors, which hopefully, the goal of those is to really take their input and reflect it in the draft code, and then when that's been done, we'll have a third meeting if we have to, but if that meeting, the second meeting's clarified everything, then we'll bring it back to you guys as a commission to go over and talk about. And then if you guys are good with it, we'll formally have a committee that signs off on it, because that's required by KDHE, we'll then sign off on it when you guys are good with it, and everyone else is good with it, and we'll send it to KDHE, they have to approve it, and then when they approve it, it will be official. So that's where we're at.
Thanks, Patrick. I'm done with that. After that.
Thank you, Commissioner Parks. Commissioner Bogner?
Yeah, a couple of things came up with me. Glad you're here, Adam. On this fire deal again, I had some more calls, run into some people. Most of it's about, people don't realize they call in the way they always did, and they're told, well, you, you haven't gotten your permits. I don't know how to communicate with people, but it's obvious that we're not getting through to them that there's been a law change. I know it was published in a paper, it has to be, I saw it, I read through those things, probably the internet, but if they're having trouble, like a lot of people do in these rural areas, internet isn't what it should be. I know Daniel's company's working real hard in a lot of areas, but a lot of area to cover, and it's just not there yet some places. And so putting it out on the internet, sometimes, I just don't know how to communicate to them. I wondered if you had any more ideas to, to, to get the word out of what they need before they, it's a good day and the wind's right, I need to get something done, and then find out you're not going to do anything.
So commissioners, what we've done so far is, we put out a press release, we've talked about it on the radio, we printed off approximately 50 flyers that are hard laminated flyers, and taken them all, the co-ops, put it on some gas pumps, handed them out to some of the gas stations in the area, and hoping people will see those that don't have access to the internet. And then when they call 911, there's an education piece to it, too, or the, the non-emergency number that they call, there's an education piece to it, and they'll explain to them how to get a permit, too. Some of the complaints that we received, it's, it seems like people want to shop for answers. They'll call four different times, and every time you tell them they need a permit, they don't want to go get one because it's a change. So we've walked through how to get a permit online, we've had people saying, I don't want my information to be in any sort of database, and really, it's out of our, we have 1,125 permits as of this morning, since June 1st on there. So there's a lot of permits in the system, and the ones that don't want to get a permit, in my opinion, they're just being kind of stubborn, because we're giving them all the tools to, to go out and get that permit. If there's absolutely no internet access, they can go to FSA, they can, the Farm Service Agency, they can help them get filled out there, and our CS will help them fill it out, and then ultimately, if none of those avenues work, we'll mail them out a hard copy. But mailing them out a hard copy takes time, and they're not happy with the, with the time constraint there. By the time we drop one in the mail, they send it back to us, we get it entered, it could be upwards of 15 days, just, just based off mail service. Yeah. In this day and age, I think most people have access to a smartphone, most people have access to an email app. have access to an email address, and the complaints that we've been receiving, they're telling us they don't have access to either one.
I mean, I'm just passing the order along. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Another little thing that's, I just happened to think of last night, is a couple meetings ago, Cargill was wanting some cooperation on a water, water well. Has that gone away, or is it still in the books?
Yeah, that was a discussion about having a study session to discuss that, but talking with Commissioner Parks, I think he was going to reach out maybe to the state.
Patrick and I, now Patrick and I talked about a phone conversation with the state. I did reach out to the warden and spoke with him, actually while I was on vacation, and I, I visited with him for quite a length. Their plans are to use the ground south of there to build a new prison, the state wants to, but that's, that's a ways off, and a, and a ton of money to do that, so I don't know whether that'll be a reality. Publicly, I don't really want to give you his opinion of what he thought whether it should or shouldn't be built, but I don't understand why the state wants to require them to put a well in, and they're not going to give the concession to a small parcel land. They're never going clear south to our property, even with a prison, I'll guarantee you that, it's not going to be that big. So, I think that's a conversation we ought to have with the state a little bit, see if we can push them to give up just a little bit of ground and easement. We want some room for expansion in the future if we need it, on our, our ground, and certainly to the east, to not lock that either. So, I, but there is a lot of things going on, and I know we'll do that eventually.
Well, I mean, that was just something that, the other thing, this 30 by 30 question that came up here several meetings ago, a request for a, a resolution. As you probably know, there's a group that invites me once a month, and that's turned into a deal where there's constituents from all over the county in that group. And it came up at their, their last meeting. They are very concerned about this, this turning east trails, and this 30 by, our cattle trails, and this 30 by 30 deal the federal government is pushing. It has the potential of taking away a whole lot of local land rights. And I know you've got to personally enter into those agreements, but some of the right people with the right money are getting those agreements. And what's scary is, is when you look at those trails, cattle trails, it's a line on the map. And when I ask them to describe how many, how much area they were actually talking about, it turns out that when you stand on that line on the map, as far as the eye can see in any direction, they want to have a viewscape similar to what it was when those trails were in action and being used shortly after the Civil War. That's going to mean there's prairie. How strict they're going to get about getting rid of what you see out there, buildings and stuff. I'd say we need some pretty strong study on what they're trying to do. And then, there is a lot of, there are a lot of people that think this thing needs to be studied and looked at pretty good, and probably ought to be a resolution. Our resolution will just say that we're not in favor of it, the way I read it, or the way I understand it. I'm no attorney, it's going to take somebody with a different mindset and, and different knowledge than me to sort, to sort out, you know, what could and needs to be done. But I don't think we ought to just let it pass without giving it some due consideration. And that, I think that's about all I've, I kind of jotted down that's happened to me in the last, since the last meeting, that, that people are worried about. Possibly, along with this water deal, I do get a lot of questions that way. People are hearing bits and pieces, and they ask me questions. I, I refer them to the, to the televised or computerized end of it. If you missed a meeting, check it out, because it pretty well explains what we've been doing, especially after today, it's getting very concrete. And so I encourage that.
Thank you, Commissioner Bogner. Staff has a comment?
Yeah, I have a question for Commissioner Bogner, kind of based on our phone conversation also, but with the 30 by 30 topic, are you going to request with the, your fellow commissioners to have this on an agenda, and for staff to bring back something? Or was it just a report for now?
Well, I guess to move forward, if we're going to do something, staff should study it, and, and, and give us some insight of what's doable. I've, I've got some printed material that was handed out, I, I might let you guys look at it, and take a legal look, and let you decide kind of what can and can't be done, or give us some advice.
If I might jump in, Commissioner. So, I, I'm pretty sure the meeting that you were at, I was at that same meeting, and, and kind of their thought is, is that these groups are going to Washington and saying, hey, you know, everybody out, out there, out in Kansas is for this. And so then the people in, in, in Washington are saying, well, if everybody's for it, then, you know, may as well do it, and then you can come out and find out, nobody knows about it. And so, they're, they're trying to get resolutions from counties, so that they, that way, when people, when they go to Washington, you know, they can say, well, hey, the people aren't really for this. So that way, it's, it's more of a, it's more of a, a bargaining chip for them to, to keep Washington from infringing on our, on our rights, rather than anything that we're, we can actually do about it.
Get both sides, rather than a balancing act. Get both sides, rather than a one-sided view.
Well, why, unless there's objection, it sounds like most commissioners, if not all of them, would, would like to see some study from staff. I think any sort of objective summary of what exactly is going on in Washington on this issue might help, and then your study as far as what we can, what our responses could be, would be.
I mean, I'm, I'm generally familiar with all this, I will provide some insight on it. I, I know, I feel like I know, I have some direction from you guys now. Philosophically, you know, legally, my training is, I don't love to jump into what I consider more federal issues, if we can avoid it, but there's definitely a local element where I understand the, the feeling of the commission to weigh in on something to be a counterpoint to someone who's saying what the majority of people want, or, so we, I can work on some stuff.
Well, the, when I first heard it, I, I, I really didn't think about it a lot, but when you see a map, it's a matter in Reno County of the Chisholm Trail. And I always figured that was Wichita, then to Abilene. But at some point, they had enough homesteading and stuff going on, that they actually, somewhere, and the map that was handed out is awful fuzzy, but somewhere between the county line and Cheney Reservoir, the Chisholm Trail was bent for several years, went up, looped out, and back to Ellsworth. So, I don't know what parts of Reno County are covered, but that's the general area west of, of, of Cheney Lake and east of the line. But that map is, that was handed out is so fuzzy, it's hard to, I got to take them glass out, and I still wasn't. But, but anyway, that's when I became more concerned that it actually is in our county.
And as a lifelong, or a resident of Ellsworth for many years, and then born there, the only legitimate Chisholm Trail ended in Ellsworth, all other Chisholm Trails are, are second-rate to the Ellsworth Chisholm Trail. That needs to be in the minutes, Cindy.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yeah, yesterday, thank you. Yesterday, my wife and I were out at the landfill, and had a couple of boys here that helped fill up something, and ford trailer for us, but when we were out there, there was two fellows that worked for the Reno County, and I think they're probably in the maintenance department, but were unloading out there, and came over and offered to help, see if we needed any help. So I think they ought to get some kudos for that, for just doing that, because I had my little steel friend here, and so I'm sure that's had an influence on it. But the other thing is, that I think Harvey County has put out their new solar and wind regs, and I think that the, with regards to solar, maybe the planning and zoning should take a good, serious look at what they put together. I was pretty impressed with what I saw, but that's something that maybe, since there's new regs out there with that, and what Harvey County's done, maybe we'll take a look at that before we get anything. That's all.
Commissioner, Commissioner Weitzel?
All right, so, had a, had a constituent call me this week, what is he, from down in your area, Don, but he's a friend of mine, and he called me up, and was burning some trash, and went to landfill, and to try and dump it, and hadn't been long enough, and sounds like the landfill did a good job in, you know, in asking him when he had done it, taking his word for it, and then when he gave the wrong answer, you know, telling him, well, you're going to have to come back later, and so I, I don't know more, what more we could have done for, for him, other than, you know, take his word for when he said he burned it, and then, because we do not want fires at the landfill. So I appreciate Megan and her team doing, doing the right thing there. So I don't know if you guys have, have heard, but, you know, COVID 5.0 is back, and, you know, different places are wanting to do different protocols and stuff, and so I do want to publicly say that, that I will vote against any restrictions or regulations that limit healthy people's right to do what they want with their body, whether it be mask restrictions, or shutting down businesses. You know, if you're healthy, the government should stay out of your, your business, and so I will be against any of that. And so I, I kind of did want to make that, because, you know, it's election season, and, you know, these things tend to, tend to happen around election season, whether, whether it's by coincidence, or whether it's by design. And so, so there's that. And other than that, I don't have anything else.
Thank you, Commissioner Weitzel. I, I just had one item, kind of piggybacking on, on what Commissioner Parks had said, I had a constituent reach out about, I don't know if it was the same issue or a different one related to kind of, I'm going to say it wrong, lot splitting or required acreage for, for construction of, of a new home on an existing homestead, and I relayed that to staff. I think there was some general consensus that, hey, you know, we don't have, some of these zoning regulations are creating some unintended complications, and so staff recognized it, but they also said, current workload with the Volunteer Zoning Commission is such that they probably won't have an opportunity to deal with that for, you know, probably through the end of the year.
I think I had the same conversation, he's in your district, actually, probably.
Okay. So, I think staff recognized it, it's worth studying, they just wanted to get the solar regs and some of the other things off the dock at first, so, probably first of next year before we get, get anything substantial out of that, is that right?
I mean, Don and I had a conversation about that, too, and, I mean, I think that solar is a big, is a big lift for the Plan Commission, they're in the midst of that, but.
Oh, this was on solar?
We can work, I mean, I think.
No, but it's just solar is on the dock ahead.
Don, we in on the plan, from the Plan Commission's viewpoint, but, you know.
Ours is solar, we're really pushing that, so towards the beginning in September, we're, you know, we're going to have the public hearing in September, and then depending on where that goes on, finalizing solar, and then this, the subject that you brought up, you know, I go all of this with Mark a lot, and the subject was brought up a long time ago, and, and what you're talking about, we was going to address prior to the emergency of getting these solar regulations done. That, that was our next thing, and I made announcement at the last zoning meeting that as soon as these solar are, are under control, whether they're adopted yet or not, any way that we're off of them for a while, that that issue will be our next subject to address.
Okay. Sounds good. Appreciate all of their work. I think sometimes they work, they have more hours than we do. That's a lot of work they do at the zoning commission, so we appreciate that. With, with that, I'm going to make a motion for executive session, try to, so I would move the board recess to executive session until 11:40, with, with Dr. Polly, the County Administrator, County Counselor, and Health Department Administrator, joining the governing body in the executive session. I would anticipate we'd start at 11:10 in this room, since we have no other business today. Justification for the executive session is discussion of job performance of non-elected personnel, and the subject matter, personnel matters of non-elected personnel. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Parks?
Would that include the health officer on that?
It can, it's not on here, but I, I'm happy to include it, since we haven't, I'd amend that to include the health officer. Does that, do you agree, agree that? Okay, is there a motion, second discussion on this motion? Hearing now, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Freezin?
Yes. Yep, 11:10, and just for the public watching, unless there's other business today, I don't expect us to come back on the recorded session today, so, thank you.